I'd like to call this meeting of the Williamsburg James City County School Board to order. I would like to certify closed session. Is there a motion to do that?
Chair, I certify that to the best of each member's knowledge, the Williamsburg James City County School Board, while in closed session, discussed only public business matters, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements as stated in Virginia law, and that only such public matters as were identified in the motion convening the closed meeting were heard, discussed, or considered.
Thank you, Mrs. Young. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 3.1, Mrs. Sersa, would you take the role, please?
Dr. Beers?
Here.
Ms. Cook?
Here.
Ms. Hummel?
Here.
Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mrs. Taylor?
Here.
Mrs. Young?
Here.
Ms. Ombi?
Here.
Moving on to item 3.2, approval of the agenda. Is there a motion, Ms. Cook?
Madam Chair, I move that we approve the agenda with one amendment, and that is to add Action Item 9.03, Title IX, Case Number 20-901.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ombi?
Aye.
Moving on to item 4.1, announcements and superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Our report this evening begins with an important announcement about the calendar for next school year. As you know, school divisions in our region have been considering a potential pre-Labor Day start. One of the things we heard through the stakeholder survey and focus groups is that families and staff would like at least one year's notice before any changes are made. Therefore, we will keep the traditional calendar with a post-Labor Day start for the upcoming 2020-21 school year. Regional Calendar Committee will continue to look at options for the 2021-22 school year with the goal of announcing long-range plans this winter. WJCC families and staff will receive an email and phone call this evening sharing the decision to maintain a post-Labor Day start next school year. Moving on now to other news. Congratulations go out this evening to James River Elementary. The school's PTA received $10,000 from Dominion Power for classroom libraries and calming corner resources. A calming corner is a quiet area of the room with soft furnishings and soothing materials to help a student de-escalate when upset. And finally, WJC students took time yesterday to host veterans at their schools and hold special activities in honor of Veterans' Day. These photographs are from Tokus, Stonehouse, DJ, Montague, and James River Elementary Schools. On behalf of everyone with WJCC schools, I would like to thank the men and women who serve or who have served in the military, as well as their families, for their sacrifices they make for our country. Madam Chair, that concludes my report this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Heron. I wanted to congratulate Dr. Beers and Ms. Young for their reelections, and also welcome aboard our new school board member, Mr. Greg Dowell, who will join us in January at our organizational meeting. And I wanted to thank Holly for your four years of service, and you still have two more meetings that you're required to attend. But since I was congratulating, I wanted to thank you simultaneously. On behalf of the board. Thank you. There's a check. We appreciate your thoughtful comments, and you'll be missed. Very much. Were there additional comments from members?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to let our colleagues and the public know that earlier this, or no, late last month, I attended the PTA council meeting, and I was allowed to speak for a few minutes to the council and talked about CIPs in general, capital improvement plans, and kind of went over our current capital improvement plan, call it sort of CIP 101, if you will. And later this month, I intend to go back and talk to the council about our need for a 10th elementary school. So the idea is to familiarize the council with not only our capital needs but our operational needs so that members of that council can carry the word back to their PTAs and parents can advocate if they so choose on behalf of our capital and operational needs.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Ms. Young?
Two meetings are coming up. I guess this would be at the end, but we'll just, the SAC committee will be meeting tomorrow, as well as CTE, and we will have a report at the next meeting.
Thank you, Ms. Young. Any additional updates, comments from board members? If not, moving on to item 5.1, there is an opportunity for public comment. I will turn it over to Mr. Kelly.
For Mr. Bowser. He knows the rules, right? He knows he only has three minutes.
Scott Bowser, please. I'm up here.
I thought you could.
Well, good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. Heron, school board members, and school faculty and staff that are here. I'm actually coming on behalf of my colleagues in regards to the e-commute days. Some have approached me in regards to it because back in September, August, we were told there would not be any e-commute days. And I know when they reinstated back, and probably about seven, eight years ago, because we were not getting raises. And I think the term that was used was some kind of cognitive vacation, I can't remember. But just something to go ahead and give the teachers because we were not getting those raises. I know we have received them now, and some colleagues have said, well, some of my raise money has gone to tax, not taxes, but to their health insurance, and other things have gone up in price. So they're still working, they're still trying to go ahead and get money for that, even though we have the raises. We do appreciate it. Also, with substitutes, I know there's some that use that day for a doctor's appointment or maybe a dentist's appointment, but as a teacher, I'd rather do that than to get a substitute and lose that instructional time for the students and have to worry about getting, filling out the paperwork, or getting the money for that. So that's just something to think about. 2020, you're talking about the calendar, we know that's a big election year. And by not having our staff there, more parking for our voters that are coming, less interruption that is there. Also mentioned about these subbing, there are a lot more teachers substituting, including this one right here, because we just don't have that pool. And just having that e-commute day is just a little something to say thank you or giving us a little flexibility. And again, people say, well, why? Why do you want it? I don't have to explain to you what teachers do. Everything from just the academics to outside, taking students and their families to dentist's appointment, doctor's appointment, because they can't get any place else, finding that pair of clothing, oh, they could use that and bringing that in when you may not have the money, but knowing that student can go ahead and use it. And an e-commute day is just something that's very simple. Also, the Veterans' Day, as we're doing the calendar, please consider that. I am from Virginia Beach, taught there along with some of my other colleagues. We celebrate that in Virginia Beach. We've had that day off with all the military there and military presence here. Again, something just to consider. Well, how do we do it? When I was on the calendar committee, we can do it, we can also check with some of the other districts. And I also want to say, Ms. Taylor, thank you because you've been with my school, Twano, and don't you forget us. You come by and see what the Tigers have been up to. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bowser. I believe that concludes our speakers for this evening. Moving on to proposed agenda, item 6.1, the annual review of the school board's standard operating procedures. So this is on the agenda tonight as a proposed item, but we will also be acting on this later on in the evening. I'm going to turn it over to Ms. Hummel.
Okay.
And briefly discuss changes that were made after our last discussion, which was a long time ago because of the election, and then we punted it to this meeting so that all of us could be here to vote on it.
Okay. So basically, the big difference with what we're bringing tonight is on page, under, I think it's protocols, on page 27? Okay. So I think we were... We removed, where did we remove? It was in here, right? But we took it out. Okay. So we have taken out language that was in the draft. So we have removed the language to the ceremony. We are going to expect that diploma ceremony is going to be managed by the administration, and administration will control the kind of aspects that before came to their, I guess, school board members and members of some of our funding agencies like James City County and Williamsburg City Council. Some of those members would be up on the dais, and when a child or a friend of a child or a constituent's child was receiving their diploma, they would hop up and they would walk across the stage and they would give the diploma out. There, we have received complaints about that, and we have heard from administration that it is disruptive to the actual diploma ceremony. And so we, however, there was discussion and kind of not total agreement on whether we should actually put that in our SOP as protocol. And so instead, we don't have it in as protocol, and we will expect that, we will just respect what the administration wants us to do with regard to the diploma ceremony. Anyone have any questions?
All right.
That was the big change.
And there were a couple of the minor changes that...
The big change from what was proposed last time.
Yep. So, Heron, none. Moving on to item 6.2, school board evaluation tool, self-evaluation, which we do annually.
Oh, just gonna, oh, I've got the dates, we're gonna do that.
Yes.
When it, time, I'm sorry. I put that down in my purse.
So we wanted, so Ms. Hummel is going to, like, last year, we used the same instrument that we've used in the past, which is VSBA instrument, which allows us to evaluate how we function as a body. And we wanted to align that data collection with our December board meeting. So I believe if everyone is okay with that, we wanted, Ms. Hummel will send out that instrument directly after this meeting to the board, and we would like to have that back the first week in December.
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Ombi. Is there a preferred date? I'm just throwing it out. Does everyone feel pretty good, like, the weekend after Thanksgiving? Is that pretty good? Is that not giving, are people, what do you...
Tell us what you want, and we'll do it.
Okay.
So the first week?
What date in first? December. How about December 5th? Is that good? No, it's, I think it's like a, I'm just throwing it out. I'm throwing it out. I'm giving you a little bit of...
It gives us nearly a month. It's just, it's fine.
I think that's good.
And we want Ms. Hummel to have enough time to pull it together.
Pulling it, sure.
Yeah, so that we can discuss it at the December 12th meeting.
So we're gonna say December 5th.
Thursday.
Is it Thursday?
It's a Thursday. Do you want me to make it earlier than that?
Oh, Thursday's fine.
That's fine. And then that gives me the weekend to put it all together before the next...
And get it back out to folks.
Which we got on December 10th.
Next meeting's on the 12th.
Am I looking at...
Right, Ms. Sersa?
There's a school board meeting on the...
Right. The 10th.
That sound good for everyone?
Okay. There's additional comments. We'll move on to information and discussion items. 7.1, WJCC schools, 2018-2020 equity series, which is pertaining to teacher recruitment outcomes for FY 19 and '20.
Thank you very much, Madam Chair. Mr. Baker will present this evening, some of our recruitment outcomes from last year with a focus on diversity hiring and some of the strategies we're using for that. Thank you, Mr. Baker.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the school board. Dr. Heron, tonight I'll be sharing with you the results of our recruitment efforts to begin this school year. Virginia is facing a growing shortage of qualified teachers. Number of unfilled teaching positions across the Commonwealth has increased by 40% over the last 10 years. From 760 to 1,080 has reached crisis proportions in certain divisions. Schools have traditionally had challenges in teacher recruitment in math, science, and special ed. The decline in teacher prep programs, state of Virginia is now listed in critical shortage to also include elementary ed, school counseling, English, world language, career and technical education, and health and PE. Further, the number of minority teachers has not kept pace with the increasingly diverse student body.
I actually grew up in James City County, so I was very fortunate to go through the school system. I went to Norg, Twino, and...
Oh, we're working on that. Mr. Baker, can I ask a question?
Yes, ma'am.
So you just listed the critical shortage areas?
Yes, ma'am.
You didn't list sped. Is that no longer a critical shortage?
No, I apologize. It's, traditionally, we've always had math, science, special ed, and in addition to those, they've also added, and the people that in the past haven't thought about, elementary ed, health, and PE as critical areas. So they're all, the state of Virginia is all, listed as all as critical. I pressed the wrong, there's only one button to press.
Always blame it on the help.
It's probably operator, user error. But there is good news, we were fully staffed throughout the school year.
Compared to other divisions?
In most school divisions across the state cannot say that. We were fully staffed for teachers on the first day.
Do you know how many of the 132, yeah, can I say that?
I don't.
I can give you one fact, though. We were informed at a recent VAS meeting that 1,000 classrooms in the state of Virginia opened this year without a teacher at the front of the classroom. 1,000 classrooms across our state. So to be fully staffed and to have some teacher in every single classroom was a tremendous outcome from HR and principals recruiting and hiring. We have a really nice video for you, see.
You have the present, the hard copy of the presentation in front of you.
But we wanted to hear this alumni speak.
Well, that's at the end. We'll get that at the end.
We'll come back to that. Do you want to continue with just the slides in front of you, or...
Yeah. The second slide is the strategic plan. It's, is the list on the top. So again, I said, we are fully staffed for the first, first day of school, and most divisions across the state can't say that. As part of Goal Five of the strategic plan, human capital and positive culture, our first strategy is to strengthen recruitment to attract highly qualified and diverse applicant pools. I'd say click now, but the next slide is why teacher diversity matters. Diversity is inherently valuable. We are stronger as an organization when people of varied backgrounds, experience, and perspectives work and learn together. Diversity and inclusion breed innovation. Groups of more diverse problem solvers have been found to outperform groups of less diverse problem solvers. There's evidence that students of color benefit from having teachers and leaders who look like them as role models, and also benefit from the classroom dynamics, thank you, and the classroom dynamics that diversity creates. But it's also important for our white students to see teachers of color in leadership roles in their classrooms and communities. Studies find that teachers of color can improve the school experience for all students. Further, teachers of color contribute to improve academic outcomes while serving as strong role models for students. Have to hit the button, so they go sideways. Hey, good. The idea of teacher, our teacher population more closely mirroring our student population is a challenging issue being faced across the nation. The teacher workforce in the United States is not as diverse as the student population or the population at large. A recent report shows that despite the critical role of teachers of color can play in helping students succeed, every state in the nation has a higher percentage of students of color than teachers of color. Currently, only 25% of those teachers and people in teacher prep programs are minorities. Also, less students are going into teacher prep programs, a 30% drop since 2008. Nationally, the teacher workforce is 82% white, 8% black, and 9% Hispanic.
So how have those numbers changed?
For the students or the teachers?
Teachers in the prep programs.
It's becoming, I think, less diverse.
Is 25%, 25% of students in teacher prep programs in the U.S.?
Yes, ma'am.
So what about, like, Virginia?
We're gonna, we're gonna talk, yes, ma'am. We're talking kind of nationally, and then, the next slide is Virginia. When we look at this issue at the state level, the teacher population is not mirror the student population. In Virginia, the teacher workforce is 77% white, 11% black, and 3% Hispanic versus the student population, which is 49% white, 22% black, and 16% Hispanic.
Mr. Baker?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, sir.
Just a quick question. Go back to that, can you go back, put that, shut everything down, that last, yeah. I'd like to know, I understand the percentages that you have there, I'd like to know the actual numbers for each one.
Across the state?
Yeah. No, no. Where it says licensed instructional personnel by race. What's the number of white teachers, the number of black teachers, the number of Hispanic, and also the student? I'm just curious to know what the actual number of African-American teachers and the actual number of African-Americans.
I think we'll have to get that, you mean for the state, for the Virginia?
Yeah, I know you don't have it now, but can you get that? I'd like to see that.
Thanks, sir.
Dr. Beers, just to clarify, do you want that data for WJCC or for Virginia?
I like it for Virginia, but I also like it for WJC.
And I think, and I think we've given you, I think we've given you WJCC as part of what you already said.
We're coming up on that later, so I was coming up on that.
Yep. And that's what we're, the next slide is specifically about Williamsburg James City County. So looking at the Williamsburg James City County, student population is approximately 39% students of color, while our teaching staff is 10.5% minorities. We're doing better with our principals and assistant principals, currently at 22.5% minorities, while our support staff is 38.2% minorities. You might say, what is our support staff? The support staff are our teacher assistants, bus drivers, custodians, administrative assistants, cafeteria workers, accountants, nurses, mechanics, and plumbers. The support staff are also leaders and mentors of our children. I shared this picture with you from last spring, when the students of Warhild High School celebrated the retirement of Mr. Gregory C., or simply Mr. C. Mr. C., that day at the celebration, the students all printed out T-shirts with Mr. C.'s mantra of "Good vibes only on the front, and on the back, be like Mr. C." He's a huge connection to our students and staff across this division, as do most of our support staff. As we consider the applicant pool, it feels and looks a bit like a funnel. It starts out big, and then it gets smaller and smaller as we get through it, and we lose applicants along the way. The proportion of teacher candidates of color decreases at multiple points along the teacher pipeline. When you consider the high school student population, our student population is approximately 39% students of color, and nationally, it's 43%. Students who go on to college is less diverse than the high school students. Nationally, 38% of bachelor degree students were students of color. Teacher prep program population is even less diverse. Nationally, 25% of individuals enrolled in teacher prep programs were individuals of color. And ultimately, who graduates and becomes licensed and certified to teach is even less diverse. Nationally, only 4% of recent graduates certified to teach were black, and 9% are Hispanic.
25% enrolled boils down to 4% graduating?
For, correct, recent graduates were, and, and when you earn, you graduate and you earned your license in that state, were black. This school year, in Williams, yes, sir?
Baker. I asked, you know, asked this question before. I don't know with the software, but I would really like to know, I say 14 minority teachers. That's our district, correct? Okay. I'd like to know the actual number of African-American certified teacher applicants actually applied. And I know, we've talked about that, that the, you know, other, the ones who weren't qualified, you know, I know all about that, you know, they got jumbled in and it changes the, but I think it's really critical that we know what's the actual number of African-American teachers who were qualified, who applied, and we hired 14 of them. Because I'd like to know, for example, if 28 applied and we hired 14, we hired 50% of the applicants, the African-American applicants, qualified. It may not be that high, but I just think that's a critical number. It's, the percentages, I think, are just, I'm assuming that 12.6%, that's based on all the applicants, correct?
That's based on all the new hires we had this year.
Right, right, okay. But I...
We can get, and I think I've talked about in the past, we can get aggregate data from the applicants. I can't scroll down to the individual to look at his or her race as an act...
Why can't we do that?
Because you don't want to do that, because some people may use that for nefarious reasons and try to discriminate against people. I don't want to be able to do that. You get, you get the data at the aggregate level from the application system.
I got interviewed by the educational committee of, and that was raised. I thought that would be helpful information, that it would indicate that, by golly, we may not get as many applicants as we would like, but we do everything we can to hire as many of them as we can. I just think that's a, that would be useful.
If I could add to your point, Dr. Beers, I think there are actually three data points. Who's applying, who are we offering, and who's actually taking the position, right?
Yes. And there's a, and during that pool, a lot of times you have, these applicants don't just apply to one school district.
That's...
They, they apply to multiple school districts because they want a job. So, I mean, as we're hiring, other people are hiring too, so that pool starts diminishing in size, so.
I think that's, that's the point that...
I think that's the point that Ms. Cook was getting to, because if we know who we've offered jobs to, that's a good data point, so.
Okay, that'll help.
Our acceptance rate.
Our acceptance rate, that might also be illuminating, like, we're offering jobs and they're going somewhere else.
Right. And so this year, we hired, for instructional staff, 136, and 14 out of them were minority teachers, which is 12 of our new hires this year.
I just think, I mean, the African-Americans, you know, citizens that I've talked to in the community feel that it's kind of skewed in the wrong direction, and this might be an effective way to say, it's not, that's not necessarily so. We may not get as many as everybody would like, as everybody wants African-American certified teachers, but the ones that we get, we offer jobs, and this is the percentage. And then you could do the percentage, but anyway, okay.
No, no, I appreciate, and that's kind of leads to the next slide of, you know, how did we hire these teachers here? So this year, we went to 17 events, and six of those were historically black colleges and universities. At these fairs, the school divisions typically outnumber the candidates. We are all fighting for the same limited resource. To give you an example, the picture on the left is from Hampton University. This year, Hampton University had 10 graduates in their school of education. Last year, they had seven graduates in their school of education. But at this event, we were competing with over 40 school divisions for those 10 candidates. So what else can we do? One strategy is to grow our own. Nationally, over 60% of teachers work within 20 miles of where they attended high school. Future teacher workforce is sitting on the student side of the desks today. We're thankful that the Teach for Tomorrow classes were added to the program of studies. We currently have 25 students at War Hill High School enrolled in the Teach for Tomorrow's program, and we hope and encourage the other two high schools to add this class. We want to increase the high school students' awareness of teaching as a viable career option. We're also encouraged that the Teach for Tomorrow program more closely mirrors our student population than the teacher, the traditional teacher prep program, with 13 of the 25 students being minorities.
Mr. Baker, before you go on to the next slide, since it seems like that is the best strategy to grow our own, would it be possible to consider possibly lowering the threshold for a class to make? Because I know, like, that class didn't make at Lafayette, it didn't make at Jamestown. You want to encourage?
I would support that.
We can certainly look at the numbers at that point in time. It really will depend on staffing, staff available, and the number in each class, but we could certainly look at it more closely next year.
Oh, you know, there's another way to keep them, and I know other school districts have, are doing this, is one of the difficulties of a brand-new teacher trying to teach here in Williamsburg-James City County is the cost of housing. And one of the things that some school divisions are doing, they're either providing additional housing stipends, or they are collaborating with realtors, business, getting additional funding to actually build housing for these beginning teachers. So, I mean, there are things that the community can do as well, it's not, you know, we're, Tim, I think, you're doing, I'm amazed at how many things you do. It's, you're doing everything that you can possibly do, given the constraints that we operate with. But having a place to live and getting some additional support that way, other districts do it, because they're in the same, they're having serious problems just hiring teachers in general, any of them. And so they've, they're coming up with some additional ways that, you know, where a teacher can, you know, make a living on that beginning salary that they get.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Hummel?
Could you just explain for anyone, the two or three people that might be listening to the school board meeting, what the Teachers for Tomorrow curriculum is? Like, what it does for these students?
Dr. Worley, do you have some insight into the actual program and what the course is about?
We actually have an introductory course that we're running, which is a semester, and then we have Virginia Teachers for Tomorrow, one and two, which are completer courses. And the introductory one, just really kind of what's their appetite for it, but the two completer courses is two, they go together and actually is a more extensive look at what the career entails. Don't have the curriculum from me, but that's a little summary of what it is.
They don't get any college credit for it or any?
I think that may be one that's possible. Don't quote me on that right now, we're looking into, there are certain, it depends on the teacher that's teaching the course, if they're certified.
And is there any, kind of like a bridge program from that, Teachers for Tomorrow to ed schools?
Certainly connections. We're in conversations with the community and local colleges about that. We have broached that topic.
Thanks.
One of the things that Rappam, the community college is doing up in the northern neck, where it's almost impossible to get teachers, is that's exactly what they're doing. They're working with a number of the high schools up there, and it's a road into teaching by way of taking coursework at the community college and then finishing up either there or they bring other people in so they can finish them up. But it's, because they're, they can't get, they're homegrown, they're growing all, they're as many of them as they can. That's a really good, that would be a superb role for Thomas Nelson Community College, to tap into that sort of approach.
Partner also with Virginia State, and they actually have a program for the students that are high school over the summer between their junior and senior year to actually spend a week on campus at Virginia. Teachers, and there's an opportunity there. In addition to growing our own teachers from the high school classroom, we also want to grow our own from our current workforce and community. With that in mind, we created a careers and teaching event. In April, the HR department hosted the Second Annual Careers in Teaching Event for those interested in a career change. This event offered potential candidates the opportunity to learn about careers in teaching. Career switchers bring diverse backgrounds to the classroom, and their professional experience make them valuable members of the education community. This year, we had 57 people attend the event, and it's included teacher assistants and substitute teachers and other folks from the community. And we hope this group more closely mirrors our community than the traditional teacher prep programs, and we did hire two teachers from this event. Outside of the career events, we also collaborate with historically black colleges and universities from being on Virginia State University's College of Education Dean's Advisory Board to teaching classes at Norfolk State University. We also partner with The Village, the NAACP, News Eye and Baptist Church, and Troops for Teachers. We want to increase WJCC's exposure and access to qualified candidates of color. We also want to always be recruiting, building relationships, making those connections, always be mining for that talent. Again, diversity is inherently valuable. We are stronger as an organization when the people of varied backgrounds, experiences, and perspectives work and learn together. We have done well to be fully staffed for teachers, but there's an opportunity for us to do better and to have our teacher workforce more closely mirror our student population. I hope some of the strategies discussed tonight will bear fruit in the future, and now we'd like to share a story from one of our teachers that we hired this school year.
I actually grew up in James City County, so I was very fortunate to go through the school system. I went to Norwich, Toanoe, and Lafayette, and Williamsburg is actually where I knew I always wanted to end up. I had a wonderful second grade teacher, and I remember that connection. She stayed in contact with me for several years, even after I left her classroom. So that is what inspired me to actually want to be a teacher in this county right here. And so after I graduated college and I moved on in my career to Northern Virginia, you know, I was up there for a while, but then I, again, I kept seeing the things that were on Twitter, and I felt this urge to come home and just knowing the people who inspired me, I want to come back and be that same person for a student who's in this county, in this division. I think it's important that students have people in the workforce who look like them and can understand them. I know from my own personal experiences growing up, I didn't necessarily have, I can't remember probably even one teacher that I had growing up was somebody who looked like me. Not that it was ever, I guess, an issue for me, but I think it would have been nice to feel that someone else has some, you know, something else that I've related to, just to have someone who maybe have shared the same experiences I have, or just having that comfort of someone who does look like me. And I think that's important in the workforce as well. You know, being a teacher, I don't always see other teachers who necessarily look like me either, and so I think it's beneficial for students, but then also for teachers as well, to feel supported and have people who have, you know, similarities to you. It really has been nicer to come to a smaller school district. There has definitely been a shift coming from somewhere so large to somewhere a little bit smaller, but like I said, honestly, the first word when I even thought about some of those interview questions were, were family, that was the only word that could come to my mind, and just the level of support that I've been given here, and, you know, how great everyone has been, and how, because if I need anything at all, someone is going to direct me to the right person, and they are so quick and responsive to making sure I have what I need.
Any questions, if there are any other questions?
Ms. Cook, and then I'll just go around.
Thank you very much for the presentation, Mr. Baker. I just would like to agree with Dr. Beers that I think that the recruitment strategies you're employing are good, and I think they're really critical and required, but I think unless and until we do something a little bit more non-traditional, we're probably not going to move the needle too much. And so I know that you served on the James City County Housing Task Force, I don't know if you're still involved in that, but I do think we're going to have to think outside the box to continue to start each year fully staffed with teachers and to move the needle on the diversity of our workforce. So non-traditional incentives, I think, are going to have to be part of the future conversation, and I hope that that's something that you'll consider.
Ms. Cook, Ms. Young?
I know for a fact that at Norfolk Public Schools, one of the things they do is they've, I've actually met janitors who've become teachers because the school district helped fund college classes, and I think that's a huge incentive to decide to go back to school, but that might be an idea, I don't know. And I appreciate everything you do, I know it's so difficult, because I too spoke to the NAACP, and I told them, you know, when you have Hampton University only graduating seven students, you know, and you've got, I didn't know that 40 schools were after them, but, I mean, you're in huge competition for the very few, so we need to be thinking outside of the box, which I think is a good description, Ms. Cook.
I guess I want to comment, and that is, I fully support creating a more diversified teaching population, but let's not forget that we have some outstanding non-African-American teachers in our school system that many young African-American boys and girls feel very good about having them in the classroom. I happened to attend the forum, Integration, Then and Now, in Williamsburg-James City County School, and there were four or five African-Americans, quite a bit older, not probably quite as old as me, but, who were up there, and they talked about their experiences. But one of the things that came through is, they would identify teachers, and almost without exception, they were white, who left an lasting impression on them after they left school. So while it is very important to continue to work on diversity, I hope we're not sending the message that somehow those Caucasian experienced teachers that we have are just as good as any other teachers in the country. I think it's important to, you know, just keep that in perspective. While we're continuing to get more African-American teachers, you know, doing all we can possibly do. So I just think, I felt like, and I probably wouldn't have said that had I not gone to that forum and heard some of the comments that those, they all said it would have been nice to have had more teachers who looked like them and sounded like them, but they also recognize that there are some outstanding white teachers in our school system.
Thank you, Dr. Beers. Ms. Kelly?
Thank you, Mr. Baker, for the presentation and for all the work that you and your staff do. I know the 10 students at Hampton probably got 40 job offers that day and probably had the same issue when you go to any other historically black college that has an education program. But, you know, one of the things we have to talk about with teacher recruitment is the job pool, you know, who's there? And part of that, a lot of that, I think, is how this society respects the profession of teaching. We put a lot of demands on our teacher, on our teachers, on the amount of time that they have to put in, both inside and outside of the classroom. And so to make teaching more of a profession that both all students are willing to consider, I mean, some of the things we have to look at are class sizes and, you know, just the demands we put on them, teacher and classroom aides, and how we can make the job more appealing to all students and not just to, you know, the teacher comes out, when a kid comes out and wants to be a teacher, they're generally not trying to be a millionaire. They know that the teaching profession is not going to make them rich by that standard, but they have another motivation, and we have to encourage that motivation, we have to encourage them to want to take those steps. And so once you get past, you know, the first couple of steps on Maslow's, right, where they can eat, they can have a house, they can have a decent car, you know, we have to make it the rest of their life satisfactory and better. And as a society, we don't do that real well. We put a lot of demands on teachers, and, you know, compensation, we all, as, in the private sector, we all look towards compensation, but a lot of teachers don't get in teaching for the compensation, they get in it for the rewards. And if we don't give them the opportunity to get those rewards, they don't consider it as a profession. So that's a very strategic and global look at it that, you know, we're not going to solve here today, but it's something that we, as a society, have to really kind of consider where we, what we're doing with the teaching profession, so. But I do appreciate all the work that you and your staff do and know that you work real hard.
Yeah, the only other thing I would say is, I think the state has finally realized that being a teacher, having a background education is an honorable thing. Because I remember not too many years ago, when we had people in the General Assembly, we had people in the State Board of Education say, well, education really isn't good enough to be a teacher, you really need to have an arts and science major. And guess what's happened in those intervening years? They have gone totally in reverse, they have now encouraged all of the schools of education in the state that have dwindling students in their post-grad programs, they're all starting up undergraduate programs where you can major in education. It is a good thing.
Thank you, Dr. Beers.
I just wanted to follow up on something that Ms. Young said. So how does the division support, say, a support staff who would like to become a certified teacher? How do we do that? What exactly do we do, financially?
We have the tuition assistance programs through the school division, through our, we have policies and people can take classes and...
So is it the same amount of tuition assistance that, so if you are a bachelor's-level teacher and you want to earn a master's, there's tuition assistance, but if you're a support staff who wants to earn your bachelor's in education now?
And a lot of the support staff we have, they actually, a lot of them already have a degree, and they're just, and they haven't become, they can become career switchers, and we have folks that do that.
I guess, just speaking, just thinking outside of the box, maybe tuition assistance shouldn't be equitable, if it gets some, you know what I mean, like, so are we thinking outside the box that way?
I think there's an opportunity there, do you do a cohort for folks and say, hey, we're going to do, for five special ed teachers and support them more, or, I think there's opportunities to be more creative there.
Okay. And then, obviously, we need to have more teachers of color, but we also need more men in the field as well. And so when we're looking at diversity, are we looking at diversity at? And so when we're looking at diversity, are we looking at diversity at, at all levels, gender, ethnicity?
Sure, we, we're not very diverse for the men. I think that's in the report that y'all received, how many men, it's, uh, I think nationally, I think less than even 2% of teachers are African-American males. It's, it's, it's not very diverse.
Or even just males in general?
Period, any males in general, it's not very diverse, correct.
Again, thinking outside of the box, our, our diversity recruitment needs to look at.
Oh, I agree.
Not just folks of color, but gender. Port.
I think that the superintendent sent you.
There was a recruitment report attached to, um, Thursday briefing, uh, two Thursdays ago. Yeah, but news and notes. Um.
Additional questions for Mr. Baker? Mr. Baker?
I get to go again.
You're going to go again? And so the next, just stay there, Mr. Baker. And so, um, item 7.2, the fiscal year 2021 compensation update.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, this point in, in the year, for the last couple of years, we've brought you some preliminary information on teacher compensation. And this is one of the first things we start to talk about as we move towards the budget development process for next year. So this is some provisional information, and Mr. Baker is on again to, to make a second presentation this evening.
Thank you. Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, Dr. Heron. As we prepare to enter the budget season, we wanted to give you some information to consider. We'd like to put into context where we are regarding teacher salaries and where we hope to go and why. As part of our strategic plan, we have a goal and a strategy to be a leader in the region regarding employee salaries. Last year at this time, we presented a similar slide that showed we were seven out of nine for entry-level bachelor salaries. This year, we gained ground on all of our competitors overall and rose one place to six for entry-level bachelor salaries. This slide shows how we compare at different milestone years. We tend to do better at the top of the scale, especially when you consider longevity pay. So this scales zero years, five years, 10 years, 15 years. On this slide, we show how we rank at the beginning of the, of the master's scale as well as different milestone years. Even though our rankings stayed at nine, we gained ground on all of our, all of our competitors at the entry level, but we did drop one spot at the 10-years mark by $90 and the 25-year mark. This is significant because the majority of the teachers that we hire have at least a master's. This year, the teachers that we hired with zero years of experience, 14 had a bachelor's and 18 had a master's. And this also bears out over the last few years with 89 having a bachelor's and 148 having a master's. That gets back to what Dr. Beers was saying.
Yeah, that's, that, I think you're going to, you're going to see that flip.
In Virginia, because now they're going to offer more bachelor's degrees.
What, what are the numbers in red?
It went, it went down.
By one, I mean, we, I don't know what the...
Correct.
So they all just went down by one?
It, it went down by one this past year. Yes, ma'am.
14 bachelors, 18 masters. Is that what you said?
Uh, for the people with the zero years of experience.
How many do we hire in total?
Uh, about 120 or so folks.
120, and do you happen to know what the average years of experience for those 120 were?
I think this year, um, it's a mix. It's, it's, uh, more at the, the lower end, but we did hire all throughout the, the pay scale. I think, and for our current teachers, about 40% of our teachers are zero to 10 years' experience. Um, 33% of our teachers are 11 to 20 years of experience and 21, uh, 20% have 21 to 30 years of experience as our current staff. And then the ones we hire this year was, it's a pretty good mix.
Mr. Baker, do we have a cap on how many years of experience, um, we will grant a teacher on the pay scale? Or do they, like, if they've taught 10 years, they get, they start at 10, and if they've taught 12, they start at 12?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
We do have, there's a top of the scale, but yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, they get the full years of credit experience. Again, uh, why is this important? Over the last few years, we've been very fortunate to be fully staffed or nearly fully staffed, but this dilemma is coming. Fewer and fewer potential teachers are completing teacher prep programs across the nation, and it's been down approximately 35%. Uh, another way to look at this is, in the 1970s, uh, out of 10% of all college freshmen were majoring in education. Uh, now only 4.6% of college freshmen major in education. Last year, we increased the bachelor salary from $43,000 to $44,600, the entry level, bachelor low, entry level. This was very hard work and some challenging decisions had to be made. As a result, we moved from seven out of nine to six out of nine for bachelor's entry level. And we did this, but, uh, we made a change compared to our competitors. Uh, we were between 1% and 3.7% better than our competitors for entry-level salary from last year to this year. So we were, the raise that we got, most folks got last year, we were that much better. On this slide, we show what it would take to gain for the bachelor's entry-level salary. This is the funding plan we showed you last year. Now with the 1920 as the current year, and as anticipated last year, we increased one place to six. This slide shows that if, if in the future years, our entry-level salary is 1% higher than our competition over the next three years of our five-year plan, so the example would be if, if we gave 3% and our competition gave 2%, by the year 2023, 2024, we would be fourth in bachelor's entry-level salary. Another example is if we were 1.5% higher than our competition each of the next three years of our five-year plan, example, we give 3.5% and our competition gives 2%, by the year 2023, 2024, we would be second in bachelor entry-level salary. And again, this is going to take a lot of effort and some tough decisions, and you please know, for every 1% increase that we give is, for all employees, is approximately a million dollars.
And of course, the other school divisions are grappling with that as well, so they...
Correct. And we don't know exactly what they're going to do, but we were fortunate this year, we were a little bit ahead of them. And so it, it, we moved a little bit ahead. As I mentioned earlier, even though we gained some ground on our competition for master's entry level, we still ranked ninth out of nine. And this is significant because the majority of the teachers that we hired, uh, have at least a master's. Even though WJCC remained last in entry-level pay, we gained ground on our competition because our master's entry level, uh, increased between 0.6% and 3.6% better than our competition. So we were slightly better on our master's entry level than our competition from last year to this year. In a similar way to the bachelor's, we anticipate that we would stay ninth, uh, this year. And on this slide, we show you what it would take to gain ground on our master's entry-level slide. I'm sorry. If, if we were 1% higher than our competition each of the next three years in the five-year plan, again, an example would be if we were giving 3% and our competition gave 2%, by the year 2023, 2024, we would be sixth in master's entry-level salary. Other example is if we were 1.5% higher than our competition, example, we give 3.5% and our competition gives 2%, by the year 2023, 2024, we would be third in master's entry-level salary. Again, this is going to take a lot of challenging, uh, work and efforts and decisions to be made.
Since we're dead last for masters, what else is it that it, it's not just, I mean, it's not just the salaries. What else is keeping these masters from, from coming here?
I think we're lucky, we still were, we were fully staffed. We had folks come here. Um, I think, uh, we're dead last because we're dead last.
We're dead last in salary.
Salary.
But it's not stopping people apply for jobs here.
We're, we're lucky, but this is, this, there's less and less folks getting into education, so this, this crisis is coming. And if we don't address it...
Dead last, even in this scenario, we'll be dead last if we give 1% higher than the competition for the next two years?
Yes, ma'am. We're that far behind.
Jeez, okay.
But you have one of the best compensation packages, particularly when it comes to healthcare than all the other school systems. So it's, although it's not, it's not a paycheck thing, I, I, you know, understand that.
Yeah, um, it's not a, it is a compensation thing because, I mean, we, we, we are dead last in, uh, masters with zero years of experience. But when we get higher up in the scale, I think we do a little bit better.
Correct.
And so when you get higher up in the scale, it means the teachers have more experience, means the teachers conceivably have kids, and so, um, healthcare is a factor in that equation. And what we provide for, for benefits is a factor in whether they come here or not. We can't, we can't assume that our, our staff does not understand salary and benefits.
Correct. I mean, it's a good point.
Ms. Young?
Can I just ask a question?
Hmm?
I mean, um, let's just take as another profession, for example, what's, what's the beginning salary, Mr. Kelly, for an engineer, first year?
More than 40,000?
That's what I'm saying. Okay. And I can tell you, having been a single parent, when I look at that, that pay, that pay, I, I chose the school district that would give me the most money. Um, and I'm, and maybe that's not being realistic, but when you've got seven kids, you find the one that's got, going to give you the most money, because you have lots of shoes to buy and food and everything else. So, um, I appreciate this, but I, I'm very concerned because I, I mean, I, when benefits packages came, I never thought about that. I thought about putting food on the table. And if you're, you're a young family, the majority of the time, you don't have to worry about your health. So that's be, less important when you're younger. It becomes more important as you get older. So I think we need to think realistically about what's going to attract these people to our, our district. So I want them to come here. We've got a great school system, but I never want to have Mr. Baker come and say, um, "We're going to have to show up in class and substitute one day."
We could use you, so. This kind of leads to my conclusion, the end of, uh, exactly your point. Um, the average Virginia teacher with a master's degree enters the profession with $50,879 in debt, more than the average Virginia teacher's starting salary. Individuals considering teaching profession are often concerned about the ability to meet their financial needs, especially when faced with other career options that would be more lucrative and require less time to achieve. Large amount of debt that students must repay upon graduation further compounds the impact of low starting salaries and a choice they have to make. Of the teacher shortage, we are facing, uh, more competition for fewer candidates. Want to draw teachers to Williamsburg James City County Public Schools and end of the profession, especially high-quality candidates who have other career options. Thank you.
Ms. Cook?
Thank you very much. I just wanted to say in advance of, um, you know, your work in developing a budget, I, I fully support, um, this effort to, uh, to move up in the rankings and even accelerating that if, if possible. Um, and, and I also support the work that we did last year in shifting, um, choice to the employee. Um, you're, you're right, we do have a fine benefits program, but I like the idea of shifting the choice to the person. If they want more benefits, they can put more money in benefits, but if they want the money to buy shoes, they can do that. And so I prefer a, a larger percentage of total compensation package to be towards salary, um, and, and instead of, uh, uh, benefits, because we're a little bit disproportionately compared to our peers, um, invested in, in, in benefits. Um, so I, I support, you know, even accelerating it. So I have a question, I guess. I think LCI's, uh, LCI came out recently. Um, I know you haven't calculated the dollar amount, so I'm not asking that, but did, did we go up or down? Did James City and Williamsburg go up or down in LCI? Do we know?
I believe we went down. Ms. Yuen was, showed it to me just the other day. Do you want to speak to it? Yep, both went down. So we don't know the impact of that on the overall budget or what money we will receive from the city and county. We don't have a sense of what that looks like.
Sure.
The purpose of this tonight is to set the stage to say, "We can't afford to get behind." And, and when, if we can, we would want to compensate our teachers and, and staff more than they are now. And, and that would be an expectation that, that I would have bringing to you in, in this year's budget.
Mrs. Young?
Yes, I just had another question. I, I know that Suri made a huge decision several years ago to, to really jumpstart their salary package. Do, do we have any idea of how they managed to fund that? I mean, I, obviously they had to make, uh, decisions about budget, but I would be interested in, first of all, knowing exactly how they prioritized their budget to, to make that possible. And also, um, I mean, how many teachers do they have in Suri? I mean, they're, they're not comparable to us, are they? Do they, do they have 11,000 students?
We can certainly find that information and get some information for you. I do know with Suri, they, they had a very big entry package, but then the salary didn't increase at all for about four or five years. So their, their, their process to get people on board was very attractive for a first-year teacher, but then there was no change for a period of time, and that was partly their method of compensating teachers so highly.
Right at their own compression, and they actually, they didn't change their salary from last year to this year. They stayed just exactly the same.
Okay, thank you.
They have fewer, they have fewer steps too, right?
Yeah. And especially in the front end, they front-loaded it.
Well, I, I do appreciate that we've uncompressed the salary scale. Thank you so much for doing that. Well, thank us for doing that.
They did the math.
They did the math, but we, we agreed.
Thank you, Mr. Baker. Okay, I think we're moving on to, uh, item 7.3, the 10-year enrollment projections.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Ms. Yuen tonight is going to present our 10-year enrollment projection update from Future Think, and thank you very much.
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board, and Dr. Heron. This evening, I will, I will be reviewing our enrollment for the current year as well as the projections that were generated by Future Think. This first chart represents our historical enrollment for the past 10 years. As you can see, there was a steady climb in total enrollment from fiscal year 11 to fiscal year 18. Since fiscal year 18, enrollment has remained relatively stable with a slight decline each year from fiscal year 18 to the current fiscal year. Our enrollment has grown by 899 students during the last decade. Current year enrollment is down slightly from last year by a total of 13 students. Information presented here is from the September 30th child count that has been submitted to the Virginia Department of Education for our K-12 enrollment and does not include preschool students. This slide shows our actual enrollment in the first column as it compares to the Future Think projected enrollment from last fall. The next column shows the variance between the actual and projected numbers, and the final column contains the percentage of that variance. Our projected enrollment for this year was 11,470, and our actual enrollment is down from the projection by 22 students. Future Think projection, once again, resulted in a less than 1% variance, as has been the trend with the Future Think projections for the past eight years. This comparison is with Future Think's low-projection model, which is also the projection that is used in budgeting, as it projects the most conservative model for projecting revenue for the following year. This next slide compares our actual enrollment from fiscal year 19 to that for the current fiscal year. As I mentioned earlier, we saw a very slight drop in enrollment of 13 students, or a 0.11% decrease. Future Think combines several methods to determine the projections for the upcoming years. One of these methods is the cohort survival method. This method uses previous live birth data and historical student enrollment to age a known population or cohort as those students move through their school career. In addition, the personnel at Future Think contact the county and city to obtain housing data for the area and compare that to the historical enrollment and dividing that by the total number of occupancy permits. This establishes a yield factor which is multiplied by the number of new housing units. Future Think has put together the projections, but we do need to keep in mind that the projections are just that, they are only estimates. Contained in the report are four projection models, the first being the most likely. This is typically used for planning purposes as it is relatively conservative, but still allows time to make decisions regarding programs and needed additional space. However, we have found that the most conservative method, the low-projection, has been closer with our end results. This year, we have continued using the low-projection for our planning purposes. Much of the... Much of this is due to the slowdown of the economy. Each projection is slightly more aggressive when predicting employment rates, lending rates, and economic growth. And as I mentioned before, we use the low-projection for budgeting purposes to reduce and hopefully eliminate the chance of a revenue shortfall mid-year.
Ms. Ewing, before you move on, I just want to be clear for the public, because we've had a lot of discussion about projections, and the low is used for operational budgeting, but we also are now using it for CIP budgeting, correct, in cooperation with the localities? That was part of what we agreed to do with the resolutions that we passed last year.
That's correct. We agreed to use low-projection, but we also agreed to revisit it every single year because if the economy changes and things start to increase more quickly, then we should always have most likely in our line of sight as well.
Right.
But yes, at this moment in time, we're using low-projections in all of our CIP work.
Thank you.
Future Think's most likely projection indicates a steady climb in enrollment and an increase of nine hundred sixty-three students over the next ten years. I do need to mention that our pre-K enrollment, which is currently three hundred and forty-four, is not included in any of the Future Think's projections because preschool students are not included in the state-supported ADM and not used to calculate our revenue. This slide shows the increase by building level using the most likely projection. Elementary is represented in blue, showing an increase of three hundred ninety-two students from the current year total of five thousand nineteen to a projection of five thousand four hundred eleven in fiscal year thirty. The middle schools are represented in orange, and this projection shows an increase of two hundred nine students from two thousand six hundred fifty-five for the current year to two thousand eight hundred sixty-four in fiscal year thirty. The high schools are represented in green, and the projection indicates an increase of three hundred sixty-two students from three thousand seven hundred seventy-four for the current year to four thousand one thirty-six in fiscal year thirty. This slide presents the Future Think low-projection or most conservative for WJCC's total enrollment over the next ten years and projects that our enrollment will increase by forty-six students from the current count of eleven thousand four hundred forty-eight to eleven thousand four hundred ninety in fiscal year thirty. This projection shows that we will continue to see slight declines over the next several years and remaining under eleven thousand four hundred. Then it will start going up again in fiscal year twenty-eight. This slide shows the low-projection by school level. Elementary is represented in blue with an increase of one hundred sixty-three students from the current year enrollment to fiscal year thirty. The middle school, again, is in orange and projected to decrease by forty-nine students, and high school is expected to decrease by seventy-two students from the current year enrollment to fiscal year thirty. The purpose of this slide is to compare the two projections, the low-projection and the most likely projection, and how they compare to our available capacity. This slide compares the total projected enrollment from each of the projections to the capacity and shows the available seats for the high school level. With the most likely projection, the division will be overcapacity by thirty-eight students in fiscal year twenty-six. With the low-projection, the total high school enrollment will have two hundred forty-five seats available across the division next year and will remain between two hundred and two hundred sixty available seats over the next ten years. This table shows Future Think's low-projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for high schools. The yellow areas indicate that a school is at or above ninety percent of its capacity, while the red areas indicate that the school is at or over one hundred percent of its effective capacity. In this projection, Lafayette High School will remain below eighty-five percent capacity for the next ten years. Jamestown is currently over its capacity at a hundred and seven percent, and Warhol High School is currently at ninety-five percent. The overall enrollment for high schools is currently at ninety-five percent and is projected to remain between ninety-two percent and ninety-five percent for the next ten years.
Ms. Ewing, can you go back to the previous slide? I just want to be clear that, you know, anyone reading that slide, it appears that we have excess capacity on the low enrollment and the range of two hundred-plus seats for the foreseeable future. But that's assuming a couple of things. First is that it's okay to have a high school at a hundred percent capacity, which the three jurisdictions have decided is not okay. And it also kind of presumes that kids come in nice packages that align with, you know, class size, and that also is not true. So you need, for optimal instruction quality, you need a little bit of play. So eighty-five to ninety percent is where you really need to be. So anyway, I just wanted to point that out.
This slide compares the total projected enrollment from each of the projections to the capacity and shows the available seats for the middle school level. With the most likely projection, the division will still have space for two hundred sixty-five students in fiscal year thirty. With the low-projection, middle schools will have four hundred eighty-nine seats available across the division next year and five hundred twenty-three available seats in school year This table shows Future Think's low-projected enrollment as it compares to the division's capacity for middle schools. The blue areas indicate that the school is at or above eighty-five percent of its capacity. Currently, Berkeley is at eighty-one percent of its capacity, and Towano Blair and Hornsby are all over eighty-five percent capacity. In this projection, Berkeley Middle School remains below the eighty-five percent threshold at an average of eighty percent capacity over the next ten years. Wana Middle School is currently at eighty-six percent of its capacity and is projected to remain at an average of eighty-five percent capacity over the next ten years. James Blair is currently at eighty-eight percent capacity and is projected to stay over eighty-five percent for the next ten years. Hornsby Middle School is currently right at eighty-five percent capacity, but will fall slightly under eighty-five percent for the next ten years, with the exception of fiscal year twenty-six, where it will again be at eighty-five percent capacity. Currently, the total enrollment for middle schools is just under eighty-five percent and is expected to remain between eighty-three and eighty-six percent capacity for the next ten years, with a high of eighty-five point six percent in fiscal year twenty-five. As before, this slide compares the total projected enrollment from each of the projections to the capacity and shows the available seats for the elementary school level. With the most likely projection, the division will still have room for fifty-nine students in fiscal year thirty. With the low-projection, elementary schools will have four hundred thirty-nine seats available across the division next year and two hundred eighty-eight available seats in twenty-nine thirty. Again, this does not include our pre-K population.
Ms. Ewing, just to reiterate what Ms. Cook said, for high schools, it's the same as true for middle school and elementary school. It's not best practice to assume that our school should be at a hundred percent capacity. Just not best practice.
This table shows the capacity levels of our elementary schools. This table is only elementary students and does not include our pre-K population. It is easy to see that two of our nine elementary schools are currently overcapacity, as indicated in red, with just, with one school, just one student away from being at one hundred percent, which is Stonehouse. Three schools are over ninety percent of their capacity, as indicated in yellow, and three schools are over the eighty-five percent threshold, and only one elementary school's enrollment falls below the eighty-five percent capacity threshold, which is James River. The division's elementary school level as a whole is currently at ninety-one point eight percent capacity and will remain between ninety-two and ninety-four point eight percent over the next ten years. We will post the Future Think enrollment report to the division's website, and we will use the Future Think low-projection to forecast WJCC's revenue to build the fiscal year twenty-one operating budget.
Questions or comments for Ms. Ewing?
Thank you very much, Ms. Ewing. This is a really complicated report to explain to the public, and it's, but I wanted to just say that the capacity, the slides that talk about projected enrollment versus capacity by level, I'm a little concerned that they do us a disservice because if someone just looks at those grids, they may come to a conclusion that's different than what we're asking for in our CIP. And so I just want to caution against sharing the information in this way, particularly when it comes to elementary schools. I realize that we have, as a community, a fair amount of discretion over the number of students that we put into our preschool programs and that it's not included in the state funding formula, which is why we don't include it in the Future Think. But I think that can lead to some confusion in addition to the idea that schools should not be a hundred percent full to optimally lead to best-practice instruction. So I look at this, and I'm concerned if someone just looks at three slides, they may come to a different conclusion, and I just want to say that.
Thank you. Ms. Cook, additional comments?
I just, looking at the Future Think report, and there's a, it's curious, but I think it's an interesting couple of remarks they have on page seven, and they're talking about enrollment and its relationship to housing, housing starts, housing. And down at the bottom of the paragraph, it says, "Of course, housing value and household composition need to be further analyzed." The conclusion may be that some of the new housing starts simply be families displaced. It is possible that enrollment may decline, though there is new area. And I'm reminded of that, I don't know, statement that came out, I think it was last week, about eliminating several hundred housing sites out at Stonehouse because of the possibility that it might turn into a conservation refuge, or whatever you want to call it. So I guess there is no answer to this question. I don't even know why I'm asking, but it just seems to suggest that some of these numbers may end up being suspect, especially the ones that are ten years out. And so I, and I know there have been, there's been some criticism because apparently we don't take into consideration those communities that are age-limited, in other words, there are older folks that live there, and it could very well be that that's why they put that household composition statement in there, is that, because that's obviously what that, I think that's one of the things that it refers to, their school-aged children and their family. I guess, I guess what I'm really saying, and you already, Ms. Cook, you said it, it is very complicated, and it can, it can be confusing. It's not, it's not just that simple, we're going to have eighteen fewer slots, or we're going to have, you know, whatever it might be, because it's all contingent on so many of these things, and it's important for people to realize that. And the other thing is, as we move forward with a new elementary school, we will be redistricting our elementary students, which will have an impact, not just on the elementary schools, but where those students are going to go. Just an addendum, I suppose, that's the only thing to say, Mrs. Ewing. I'm sure you understand it, and welcome your phone number if questions come up. I'll just send them on to you. But I appreciate how difficult it is to do projections, and I, but I also have to praise Future Think. We've been incredibly accurate over the last ten years, not just fifteen years. So it's, it just depends on, you know, where the community's going over the next.
Thank you, Dr. Behrs. Additional comments?
I guess I would just like to share, I think part of the Board's role when we talk about CIP is to give context to these numbers, which are just, are just black and white, raw data. And so, and thinking particularly about the elementary level, I know that what it, what it means today for our students at ninety-two percent capacity is that students at Clever Baker no longer have designated band and orchestra space. And so students are, have condensed lunch periods, they can then have orchestra and band simultaneously in a cafeteria with vaulted ceilings. I know that across the division in all of our elementary schools, we no longer have designated space for students who need OTPT, speech and language therapy, and those therapies are being performed on stages. I know across the division in all of our elementary schools, I don't think any teachers have designated workspace. We've converted all that space into learning space and tutoring spaces. I know that in elementary schools, we have converted hallways and made them makeshift classrooms with curtains. So that's the context for the raw numbers. And so, Ms. Cook, you're right, when, when folks from the community are looking at just this, it doesn't give the whole picture. But I think as we move forward into the CIP conversation, we can share that so that people understand what ninety-two percent capacity means, and what that means is it's not a great academic environment for our students.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Okay, moving on. The next item is the CIP. Dr. Heron.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We're pleased this evening to present my proposed capital improvement plan for your consideration, and Ms. Ewing is going to start all over again and take us through the updated capital improvement plan. You'll notice that there are not numerous changes from the committee's recommendations, but those that, those changes that are there are driven by some of the numbers that you've just seen in the last presentation. Thank you, Ms. Ewing.
Thank you. All of the CIP documents are in a blue folder at your seats. Evening again, Madam Chair, members of the Board, and Dr. Heron. Last month, I presented to you the CIP Committee's recommended CIP. This evening, I will be sharing with you the Superintendent's Proposed Capital Improvement Plan for fiscal years twenty-one through thirty. Included at your seat is a spreadsheet showing the recommended tenure plan for your reference. It's the papers that are on legal size. Any additions to the current adopted plan are either highlighted in green if they've been added in the first five years, fiscal years twenty-one through twenty-five, or highlighted in yellow if they've been added in years six through ten, fiscal years twenty-six through thirty. Amounts highlighted in orange have been updated. Estimates for projects in the capital improvement plan include anticipated A and E contingency and an annual escalation rate of three percent per annum. A new project may appear in the CIP for the first time due to new or updated information, for example, new set requirements or mandates or for safety reasons. As a point of reference and for information, our funding partners adopt a five-year capital improvement plan, but funds are appropriated on an annual basis. During the fiscal year seventeen budget process, the school board began developing a tenure plan, which enables the division to project and plan for future needs beyond the five-year plan and also gives our funding partners adequate time and opportunity to prepare and budget for capital projects. As funding is appropriated annually, tonight, our focus is on fiscal year twenty-one. We'll concentrate on the changes for fiscal year twenty-one from the adopted fiscal year twenty-five-year plan, and we will also review modifications to the current plan that may have arisen from need or changes in cost estimates. In line with previous years where a project has been requested in the year-end spending plan that would qualify as a CIP project, the bus garage HVAC has been added into the CIP in the next funding year, fiscal year twenty-one, at an estimated cost of two hundred sixty-five thousand. This project is to add HVAC to the bus garage in order to alleviate the working conditions during the summer and the extreme heat. If funded in the year-end spending plan, this project would come out of the CIP. Last year, the Long Range Master Planning Committee and the CIP Last year, the Long Range Master Planning Committee and the CIP Committee carefully considered the options of either a new elementary school or expansions at elementary schools and determined that it made more sense financially as well as logistically to build a 10th elementary school. At all schools have the capability of expansion, and we already have two schools with over 700 students. Originally, the elementary school was placed in the CIP during the fiscal year '19 budget cycle in year 2028. Upon review of the original estimate obtained in 2017 for a projected cost in 2028, it was determined that it included anticipated land and site development costs as well as escalation. Given the request for the school has been moved up, we obtained three new estimates this year as well as factored in the average cost statewide and have adjusted the amounts in the CIP to reflect this change. Previously, the new school was in the CIP for a total of $38.5 million, and the updated cost to build it sooner reduced that to $29 million. Current adopted CIP plan has the elementary school in fiscal years '23 and '24, but the recommendation is that it be moved up to fiscal years '21 and '22. County is requesting that the auxiliary gym at War Hill be built to specifications to serve as an emergency shelter. This project is currently in the plan for a cost of $2,548,660 and has been updated to $3,384,271 to accommodate this request.
Can I ask a question about that, about that auxiliary? If it's going to be served as an emergency shelter and they're providing additional funds for that, it's still WJCC's building or gym, correct?
Yes.
Because county built a stadium that is the county stadium, and it really should have been built by the school system to go with War Hill. Sandy Warner Stadium is a county stadium, and it's not owned by the school system.
There's a lot of events that go on there.
I know, but it's not, I know, I know. That's, I just, I'm, I feel as, I want to make sure that there's nothing like that going on. I think the schools, that's all, all I have to say.
Additions to the first five years beyond the ones already mentioned include the following for fiscal year '25. Paved playground space at Stonehouse Elementary and the school buses. School buses are typically included when a school is built through the CIP, so we have added a request for five buses.
Not till fiscal year '25?
Up to '24.
Checking, because you're building a school in '22.
Yes. Additions to the existing plan in years '06 through '10 or fiscal year '26 through '30 include the following. Claretburg Baker bus canopy, as well as HVAC roof replacement and refurbishment. Generator replacements based on the newly established generator replacement cycle. Jamestown refurbishment. Middle school running surfaces. Perfume Cooley Field. Auditorium refurbishments at Matthew Whaley and Berkeley based on the newly established auditorium refurbishment cycle. Gymnasium refurbishments at Toino, Berkeley, and James River based on the newly established gymnasium refurbishment cycle. And widening of the driveway entrance into DJ Montague to alleviate traffic backing up onto Centerville Road. In addition, you will also see a new project for preschool space in fiscal year '26. This amount is an estimate based on square footage cost estimates from an architect and 2017 average cost information escalated out to fiscal year '26. The Long Range Master Planning Committee will review preschool space needs at its first meeting for the year on December 4th to bring forward a recommendation for inclusion in a future CIP.
Ms. Ewing?
And I'll go to Ms. Homel. Just back to the DJ Montague driveway entrance widening. I'm just curious, we seem to have backing up on roads as an issue in multiple schools. So how was DJ chosen?
Came from a request from the school for the widening of the road. It's not the actual physical road feed out, but it's actually on school property.
But that's a problem at multiple schools, I would argue.
It came up from the school, was one of the school requests.
Okay, then, Ms. Homel.
I just have a, it's a visual Excel request on this form. When you go to page four or five and you have facilities, new construction, and then you have high school capacity, expansion, cafeteria design, $1 million, I, it really, visually, to me, would be better to just break that.
Hard to have it on the same.
Yes. Okay, I mean, just because.
Yes, I agree.
You're, you're sitting there and you're like, whoa, wait a minute, because I was sitting here going, where's, where's Jamestown's high school cafeteria design? And then like, oh, it's on the previous page. So anyway, it's just a visual.
I will now review the modifications to the existing plan. The first is related to the high school expansions, which are being adjusted based on the enrollment data and projections that I shared with you earlier this evening. Expansion at Jamestown has been moved from fiscal years '22 and '23 to fiscal years '23 and '24. In addition, the cost estimate for Jamestown has also been updated for an eight-classroom expansion as opposed to a 12-classroom expansion, which reduces the cost from $10.9 million to just under $9.3 million in fiscal year '24. Expansion at War Hill has been moved from fiscal year '22 to fiscal year '23. With construction of the elementary school being proposed for fiscal year '22, it is not recommended to have a second major construction project beginning in the same year as a new school, so the high school expansions have been moved out. Second, based on the projected middle school enrollment for the next 10 years being on average at 84% capacity and not yet reaching the 90% capacity overall where action needs to be taken, the design and construction of a new central office has been moved to fiscal years '29 and '30, which will move Phase Two of James Blair to fiscal year '31 or later. This will be reevaluated each year as updated enrollment data is available. We provided a spreadsheet showing you the total budget by project and allocated by school. The next few slides will summarize the next five years by project type. The first area is for HVAC and window projects. This area accounts for 20% of the total five-year CIP, or $16,362,094. Roof replacements, school refurbishments, and renovation projects account for 9% of the total five-year budget, or $7,769,290. Projects grouped into the other category include items such as walk-in refrigerator, freezer replacements for cafeterias, generator replacements, electrical repairs, as well as division-wide projects such as parking, brickwork, and playground equipment. The total cost estimated over the next five years is $4,032,472, or 5%. Total cost for construction is estimated at $55,227,357, which is 66% of the five-year budget for capital improvements. This is a summary of the budget for our five-year plan, which totals $83,391,213. To highlight our major projects, fiscal year '21 contains the design for the new elementary school and the Lafayette expansion, as well as construction funds for the War Hill Auxiliary Gym. Fiscal year '22 contains construction of the new elementary school. Fiscal year '23, the design of Jamestown's expansion and the construction of War Hill's expansion, as well as Lafayette's renovation are incorporated. Next steps in the process include a public hearing on November 19th and school board discussion, followed by the school board's approval on December 10th.
Thank you, Ms. Ewing. Before we take your questions this evening, I'd like to offer some additional information about the need for a new elementary school. As you know, it is currently planned for fiscal year '23, '24. However, as Ms. Ewing referenced earlier, we are recommending that we escalate this project and move it to '21, '22, which was also the recommendation of the CIP Committee. Why? Because the data shows that we need the school sooner rather than later. Two of our schools, Matthew Whaley and Matoga, are already at or above 100% capacity this year. You can see them in this chart in red, and I think you've seen this earlier as well. Stonehouse is just one student away from being at 100%. These schools don't have any pre-K students in them currently. Laurel Lane and Blatant, shown in yellow, are at, at or above 90%. And total elementary school enrollment is at 91.8% capacity this school year. As a reminder, as referenced by Ms. Cook earlier, the target percentage agreed upon by the school board, Board of Supervisors, and City Council for making a decision to add space at each level is 90%. These current enrollment numbers do not include 395 pre-K seats spread over five buildings, which have been full every year for the last three years. And in fact, we've had 100 students waiting for seats at pre-K. Those numbers, those pre-K seats are at Claretburg, Laurel Lane, DJ Montague, Norge, and Blatant, which are all of the schools that are 85 and 90% or above. Right now, we have students in two trailers at Matthew Whaley, and we plan to add a trailer at Stonehouse next school year. And even without another student walking through their doors, Stonehouse and Matoga are already bigger than some of our middle schools. The Long Range Planning Committee discussed both the potential expansion at existing schools and construction of a new elementary. They considered the optimum size of schools, the feasibility or cost of adding 100 students at each site or building a new school, average cost to expand core spaces within the buildings, potential impact to transportation, and many other factors. When you consider these things, our current enrollment and the projections from Future Think, the data is compelling. We really do need a 10th elementary school. This slide provides projections for the next 10 years. Next year, three schools are projected to be above 100% capacity. Two others are expected to be above 90, and three are currently above 85%. One school stands out. It's below 85% capacity. In fact, it's actually at 80%, and that's James River Elementary School. This school has 72% of its students on free and reduced lunch. It has the largest English learner population of any school in the division with 19%. Currently, the student-to-teacher ratio is approximately 18 to 1. So while enrollment is lower, the student needs are greater. Because of the student-to-teacher ratio, all classrooms are being used at James River Elementary this year. It is at capacity from a student's need perspective and an instructional perspective. Overall, projections show that total elementary school enrollment will continue to exceed 91% capacity every year until at least 2030, when enrollment is expected to be at 94.7% capacity. And remember, these numbers do not include the 395 pre-K seats spread across five schools that are currently below 100%, not including James River. Our incredible teachers and staff are making the most of the space they currently have. And most important, our students are flourishing. However, the reality is that as we continue to grow, more space will be needed to maintain that level of excellence. Thank you for your consideration of the capital improvement plan recommendations this evening, and we look forward to your questions and comments this evening.
And before we begin, we do plan to discuss this again at next week's meeting. But if there are questions, comments right now.
Sure. So the data you gave on James River is really very telling. 72% free and reduced. Did you have numbers for ELL or just it was a highest percentage?
18%.
19%.
Highest in the county and city.
Right. And, and it's also basically built on the county line, so it's way, way kind of down. And so, and so there's, there's a reason why that school should, should be at 18 to 1, and it should, you know, 72% free and reduced, which is by far our largest free and reduced population. So I think that's really telling, and I think that, I think we, that, that really needs to be in the public conversation about this, is that there's a reason why we just can't redistrict incentive kids to James River because of the needs of that, of that student population. So I think that's pretty telling. As far as the pre-K, can you, can you go over one more time the schools that have the pre-K?
Schools that currently have pre-K are everything except the three with 100%, and except James River. Let me just list their names for you again.
CBV, DJ, Norge.
Claretburg, Laurel Lane, DJ, Norge, and Blatant.
All have pre-K students currently. Different numbers in each school, but 395 seats. I think we said there's about 344 currently, but by the end of the year, those seats are full, and we have another 100 on a waiting list that we could be serving in our schools.
Right. And, and so there has been some conversation about having a pre-K center. And so if you locate that somewhere, you have, you have students potentially coming from Norge, Stonehouse, James River, and all of them coming to some central facility if we were to build that. And that's, that's a lot of, lot of travel time for those kids and a lot of travel time for those parents to get to those schools. And there's a reason, there's a, there's an academic reason why we don't want to go to that.
We certainly can serve preschool students at several sites, and we could potentially serve them in two sites potentially, or one. I don't think, I think the key is that the quality of the teacher in the classroom overrides everything, but we can certainly get you additional information about the pros and cons of both of those options. But we are recommending or putting into the CIP for the first time in fiscal year '26, a need to consider pre-K space in some form. Whether it's in current elementary schools or whether it's at two separate sites is to be determined. And one of the, the key priorities of the Long Range Planning Committee this year will be to focus on that, and their first meeting is in December 5th.
Right. I think it's worth, it's worth saying again, James River, 72% free and reduced lunch. I mean, that, that is, I think, I think the general public might find that stunning, that that number is so high there.
And what is, again, for the general public, what is our average free and reduced lunch?
It, it varies. It's, it's about 35, but we have several schools in the 40s, and we have a couple of schools in the 20s. So if we look at class size across our various schools, they're, they can be very different.
But in this case, with, with James River, they're really double.
Right, absolutely. Yeah, and it's a, it's a school-wide Title I school.
And I'm also, for planning purposes, I know we've agreed on the low projection as for our, for our CIP, but the difference between the low projection and the middle, and the most likely projection is really difficult for us from a planning perspective, because in 10 years, that's 1,000 students, which, you know, that's, that's a full school that we're looking at there, and it takes a while to build a school. And so it's, it'd be interesting to see from the, from, let's just talk about the county for a second, from the county's perspective, do they, or our, or our low shows that we're basically staying flat. So is the county looking, when they do their planning, are they looking at school-aged children, families staying flat? And so it's just interesting to, if that, if there's alignment there, because, you know, if you're building more parks in some divisions and that kind of thing, are you building them all for retired, or are you building them for families? And it's, it's, it'd be nice to have some alignment and consistency from, across all the planning organizations, from at least the county's perspective, because I think they have the most potential for growth. And so that, that would just be an interesting data point for me. But thank you for putting this information together and, and the good work and, and good thought to put it together to present all these documents to us. I appreciate that.
Another thought that I had when looking at the 10th elementary is the location of where the 10th elementary could be. And it seems to me when I'm looking at Matoka and Matthew Whaley and Stonehouse as being the three most overcrowded schools. the three most overcrowded schools, that I'm hopeful that, without disrupting too many people in a redistricting, that you would, we would think, when we are looking at land, that it would be land that would be at least either maybe land around Matthew Whaley and Matoka, or I don't know how we would be able to strategically choose a site, but if we could choose a site that could be, could really help the schools that are the most overcrowded without impacting moving people past miles.
I think that'll be, it'll be challenging, because I think the site, the new school site, will be driven by where the land is currently available, and the cost of the land, and many other things. But that is yet to be determined, and we are already meeting with the county and city and starting to begin the process of looking for land.
And our numbers do not include land.
Yes, sir. No, sir, they don't.
I think another interesting number, to go back to the live birth count, to look at 2017, 808 babies showed up, and in...
Showed up?
The stork was busy.
That's enough for one school. 2022, they're going to, they're going to school. That's 800 kids. Yeah, I mean, these numbers, they're not, that's not going to change. That stuff's not going to... Can you imagine having 800 more kids in preschools?
I can't imagine having one more kid.
They're babies now. No, sir, they're two-year-olds.
We would love to have 800 more kids.
They're two-years-old now.
Mrs. Young.
Well, I guess the one thought I have is when I go into elementary schools, it's, at first, it was kind of, I thought, novel, that there were spaces being used that you wouldn't traditionally think of classroom space. I looked behind a curtain, and I thought, that's an interesting place for a curtain. There was a small group going on. And then as I visited more and more elementary schools, I've seen this more and more evidence. So I think that's another thing that we need to take into consideration. We need to have spaces that are true spaces for education. And I, having taught in an area, an old bookroom that I cleared out, it's not always optimal. You need to have a space that you, as a teacher, you feel like you have some control over.
You'd like a professional?
That would be nice. That's always nice. Yeah, I've taught behind stairs, too.
So I'd like to follow up on Dr. Beers' comment about the War Hill Auxiliary Gym, and I think it's always a good idea if we can build space that can be used for more than one purpose. So I generally think that's a good idea, but I would like to better understand, you know, ownership and the impact of that use on our facility. You know, I think if, you know, we're planning for a hurricane, it might be that we don't have to close school for a day because they're using an auxiliary gym instead of a school for shelter, for instance. But I'd like to get a better understanding of what that use agreement might look like, and I just think we should be thoughtful about that. I think generally, I absolutely support it, but I think just part of the due diligence work. So I appreciate Dr. Beers bringing that up. And I absolutely support moving the elementary school up. I think it's our job to present a budget of need, not only operationally, but capital as well. And if it gets moved back, then so be it. But I think, I appreciate your moving it up to where we need it, because I think the data is clear, that the data are clear that we need that. And I appreciate also the pre-K placeholder, placeholder, and I think that that's going to be sort of phase two of our elementary school needs. And I think it's really critical that we have a community-wide discussion. So I hope when you are doing your master planning work, that you do include key stakeholders in that conversation. We do have other pre-K providers in our community who may or may not be looking for space, so Community Action Agency and CDR. And so I think we have to at least be aware of their strategic direction as we plan, because this is a community-wide issue. We've got children on waiting lists. I suspect if we did a sweep of the community, we would find more than the 107 children that aren't currently on our waiting list in need of these services, just based on poverty data alone. And so I just hope it's a, I hope we make it part of a community-wide discussion.
Thank you, Ms. Cook. Mrs. Hummel, did you have a follow-up?
I was just...
I mean, Ms. Young.
Yes, I would appreciate...
She knew who you were talking about.
I just have something to follow up, I guess. But I would be interested, when we're talking about an increase in the amount of money that's being, we originally requested for War Hill Gym, and the county has wanted to turn that into an emergency shelter. Thank you. But what is the difference? What makes that difference? I mean, do they put a kitchen in it, additional bathrooms? I mean, those are the kind of things I'd like to know that adds to the cost of that.
I think Mr. Snipes has been working closely with the county and with emergency services in particular to understand what the additions would be and the actual cost. Mr. Snipes, do you want to speak to those?
The difference in cost is just over 800,000.
Yes, it's to add some structural support, to make it a larger space, but also to include some restrooms, because the original gym did not have restrooms. We want to make it for windborne debris, as well as be able to withstand the roof to be reinforced. So, and it's also to include a generator. So there's some, there's some additional things there that we were not going to include.
You're going to have more restrooms for women, right?
That's all will be in the design process, I'm sure.
I mean, that's always a problem now. If you're going to have a lot of families in there, you're going to have babies, you're going to need changing tables. I'm just thinking some of the things, I mean, I'm not above taking over a man's bathroom, but...
Gender neutrals.
Baloney.
One of the things we should know is that the current War Hill is considered a shelter by the county already, so they would have access to the entire school, not, the gym is just, will be also be selected as an auxiliary, I mean, as a shelter.
Okay.
They'll have access to the locker rooms and to the restrooms that are currently at.
I was trying to avoid bothering you tonight.
I'm gonna be there.
Carp sweater, though.
Additional questions for Mr. Snipes or Ms. Ewing?
Thank you, Mr. Snipes.
I would just like to reiterate what Ms. Cook said with regard to a community conversation. I know that 40 years ago, the community came together to leverage resources with regards to pre-K, and I think we're at that point in time again. And so I think it would be important for the school division to at least lead that. It's time to revisit what was born 40 years ago, which 40 years ago was bright beginnings. It was the Need Center, and now it's bright beginnings.
Moving on to policies, 8.1, retire policy, ABB, staff involvement in decision-making. I defer to the policy committee.
We are being rescued by Dr. Murphy.
I was just coming here to support your...
By all means.
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board members, Dr. Heron. Policy ABB is up for retirement. It is no longer a policy used by VSBA. It was last advised in 2001, and the title is a little bit misleading, because it says staff involvement in decision-making. It's not that we're no longer going to encourage staff involvement in decision-making. It's just that it is not necessary and slightly redundant in that we have an attachment that shows you where the staff involvement in decision-making is also in other procedures and policies, as well as codified into Virginia state law. So it just, it really bears no reason to continue on in our policy manual.
And we wanted to point out that this policy has been reviewed by the WJCC Education Association as well.
Any additional questions about this policy and retiring it? If not, moving on to 8.2, revised policy BG, GBD, Board Staff Communications.
Okay, this policy, again, it's just being slightly revised. We updated it based on Virginia code, some small grammatical errors as well. This policy also has been reviewed by WJCEA, and it's just been brought up to align with current VSBA policy.
Any questions? Murphy? Okay, moving on to item 9.3, revised, recode and rename policy IFD, Curriculum Review and Adoption, to policy IF, Curriculum Development and Adoption. Ms. Paula?
Good evening, Madam Chair, members of the board. Dr. Heron, this evening, I'm bringing forward policy IFD, Curriculum Review and Adoption for your consideration. We are renaming and recoding this policy to align with VSBA policy. And additionally, the changes in the content of the policy bring WJCC's policy in line with Virginia School Boards Association. They have been reviewed, approved by council. Please note, following the policy that Dr. Murphy just discussed, we have included specific language in this policy that includes teachers and specialists' participation to give those stakeholders a voice in the process. As in the past, new courses and those that are being proposed for elimination will be brought forward for your approval as part of the program of studies presentation.
Any additional comments, questions for Ms. Paula?
Just for consistency, I noticed between BG and GBD and this IF, we're not consistent with our capitalization of superintendent. So I know that we're trying to make everything match, so...
To your leadership, yes.
We are going to miss you, Paula. Did you find any Oxford commas?
I think we got all the Oxford commas in there, so we're good.
Take care of that. Anything additional for Ms. Paula on that one? Moving on to 8.4, new policy, IGAE/IGAF, Health and Physical Education.
As Board Chair mentioned, I am bringing forward this policy. It is a brand-new policy. We currently do not have a Health and Physical Education policy. This proposed policy is modeled after the 2018 Virginia School Boards Association policy, IGAE and IGAF. Content of this policy is in line with VSBA and has been reviewed, approved by council, as well as school counselors and our coordinator of Health and Physical Education. Happy to answer any questions at this time.
Questions for Ms. Paula, Ms. Cook?
No, I just want to go back to 8.03 really quickly. I'm sorry, I just...
I know.
Ms. Hummel, just, and Ms. Paula, if I'm wrong, but I just, so typically, it is common for the superintendent and their administration to be in charge of the program of study and just prize the board of any changes. Is that, is that correct? Is that, is that correct?
We have traditionally brought them to you, presented, and then in the second meeting, you have voted on them.
Right, but in other divisions, it is more normal for superintendent to have jurisdiction over the program of studies and just to keep the school board informed.
That is correct.
So I just wanted to let the school board know that Ms. Hummel and I had that conversation with Ms. Paula and recommended to this body to keep that the same, our practice the same, which is to adopt the program of studies. But I just wanted to let you know that we had that conversation and that other school boards don't do it that way. Correct?
Additional comments, moving back to 8.4 with our comments about Health and Physical Education. Comments? Thank you, Ms. Paula. Moving on to 8.5, revised policy KH, Public Gifts to Schools. Ms. Cox?
This evening, I bring to you policy KH, Public Gifts to Schools, for your consideration. The policy was first adopted in 1983, just 36 short years ago, and has not been revised since. The changes that are before you tonight reflect changes, recent changes to the VSBA policy and current JCC practices.
Are there any questions, comments?
There's nothing here that would change the foundation and how the foundation works.
Any additional comments? Thank you, Ms. Cox. Moving on to action items. 9.1, is there a motion to approve personnel actions?
Madam Chair, I move approval of the personnel actions as presented this evening.
Is there a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 9.2, annual review of school board's standard operating procedures, is there a motion?
Madam Chair, I move that we, for the readoption of the school board's standard operating procedures, known as the SOP.
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing none, Ms. Serza?
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Ms. Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Mrs. Young?
Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
And item 9.3, this is to support the Title IX...
How about if I just make the motion?
Yes.
I move that the school board uphold the conclusions and recommendations set forth in the report of case 20901, and that the chairwoman will be authorized to issue a written decision setting forth the school board's rationale.
Second of such a well-read motion.
Thank you.
Mr. Kelly, any discussion? None, Ms. Serza?
Mrs. Young? Aye.
Dr. Beers?
Aye.
Ms. Cook?
Aye.
Hummel?
Aye.
Mr. Kelly?
Aye.
Mrs. Taylor?
Aye.
Ms. Ombi?
Aye.
Item 10.1, board members' comments. Ms. Taylor?
Well, thank you for thinking of me. I can actually smell them, even though I can't really smell them, because I'm sick again.
Put more water in there.
Yes. So thank you. I appreciate it.
You're welcome. We will miss you. Ms. Cook?
Yeah, thank you. I would just like to request, I know we don't know the financial implications yet, but I would like an update on what the new LCIs are, because I'm just, just like to know that stuff. And then also, do we know when James City County Board of Supervisors and the City of Williamsburg are taking action on our year-end spending request?
It's before their board for consideration this evening. I don't know if they're discussing or taking action, but it's on their agenda tonight.
Thank you very much. And I just wanted to let everyone know that it is Take Your Legislator to School Month, and this month, we took, Ms. Ombi and Dr. Heron and I took Senator Normant to Matthew Whaley Elementary School, and along with Councilmember Pons and Supervisor Larson, and we had a wonderful tour. So I wanted to thank Ms. Ford and her team for allowing us to visit. It was really special to spend time with students, especially when they were electing their student council, and so they got to interview all the elected officials on why, what motivated them to serve. So it was really nice.
I'll just add on to that, and then I'll go to disregard that one item. So today, I was able to take Senator Monty Mason to Lafayette to tour. Mr. Hippel had hoped that he could join us, but his schedule was difficult, getting everyone's schedule to align. So hopefully, Mr. Hippel will be able to attend another tour. And Ms. Hummel will be taking Delegate Mullin to Berkeley next week.
Thursday.
On Thursday.
It's Thursday.
And I'll be taking newly-elected Delegate Batten to Hornsy Middle School on the 18th. So we will have been able to have all of our statewide legislators attend our school tours, but we often have city and county elected officials along, as well as other community stakeholders throughout the year. So I just wanted to add to that. Ms. Young?
Okay, I want to just kind of respond to the e-commute date, and partially because I was a teacher, and I can tell you how difficult it is when you have your own family. And I mean, all of us that work or have worked know that it's difficult to participate in getting, especially if one spouse is responsible for taking kids' dental appointments, doctor appointments, school physicals, you know, school plays, dance rehearsals, all the things that you do as a parent. But I think that date, I think we should seriously consider that, because I think anything that promotes a positive environment and shows that we are understanding the position of our teachers, I think, is helpful. Which takes me to my next thing about making teaching more inviting. One of the things, I don't know if you remember, but if you ever took a sociology class, you have to do, had to do those sociograms, where you had one student, and then you added another student, then you added another, and then eventually, if you get 21 students in there with a teacher, it's multitudinous amounts of relationships and interrelationships and opportunities for all kinds of things to happen. So class size plays a huge part in making sure that those things are less difficult for teachers. If we want to show teacher appreciation, for me, it's all about pay. We have to make sure our teachers are paid well. So this year, I guess I'll plant my flag in the sand. I'm going to be working for a big pay raise for our teachers. They need it, and I don't think we can argue against that. So thank you.
Ms. Young, Dr. Beers?
A couple of things.
A couple of things. First of all, I would really like to congratulate James River Elementary School for getting that $10,000 award from Dominion Energy. And knowing all the folks down there, they will spend that money, they will do, it'll go so far in terms of how they end up using it. I also really need to say, and I need to say it every time, our folks themselves, all of us, get up. But to thank them once again for giving us really the critical and really helpful information. I know it may not be as exciting to some people, but the, but the numbers and our positions within the context of other school divisions are really important to know, and what our, our goals with our CIP is. And it really helps to inform us as we move ahead with budget considerations. And I hope the public either watches or reads or listens to some, to this information, because it is really critical for them to understand why we need to do what we need to do in order to have the very best school system we can have in the Commonwealth of Virginia.
Dr. Beers, Mr. Kelly?
I have to agree with Mrs. Young on the e-commute day. I feel like I should read my conflict of interest by my wife being an employee of the school system, but I think that's one thing that we could, that's one simple thing that we could do to show appreciation for our teachers and help to lower their stress level on some level. As the Vice Chair of the New Horizons Regional Education Center, and as well as a member of the WJCC, I represented us at the ribbon cutting for the plumbing and pipe fitting lab at New Horizons. It's a lab that teaches pipe fitting skills for both residential, industrial, and shipbuilding to those students down there. There were several WJCC students who were involved in that lab, and so that's going to be a great asset for New Horizons and for our students and for the students on the peninsula. I also went to the WJCC Schools Foundation Event at War Hill, where several of the recipients of the grants were there, showing what they did with the, with their, with their grant and how that met the needs of our students. And that was really a special event, good for the community, good for the, for the donors to see their, their money and their dollars, and we're paid off for our students. And I also feel like we should also recognize Dr. Worley for her Senate resolution from both Senator Mason and Senator Normant. Commanding her as an exceptional educator, in recognition of her 2018 Outstanding High School Principal of the Year. So I just thought we should close that loop tonight. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Kelly. Mrs. Hummel?
It's always fun to go after all these other people who say all these wonderful things. So I wanted to just give a shout-out to Stonehouse Elementary. Both Mrs. Young and I were lucky enough to experience the Veterans Day, the morning edition, which I understand was their dress rehearsal? I can't imagine what.
It's amazing.
The final nighttime event was like. It was just amazing to see the fourth graders put on such a fabulous show, and then, and then to have their custodian, and I forget his name.
Grisham.
Mr. Grisham?
I think that was his name.
Anyway, singing the very last song, which was just wonderful. It was just a feel-good event, and also very interesting, the slideshow that shows the impact of the military at WJCC, and in particular, Stonehouse. But I would, I would imagine it would be similar at every one of our schools, the number of relatives that our students have, fathers, grandparents, aunts, uncles, parents, mothers, that are military members. And it was just a very impactful event, so I wanted to thank them. Also, to piggyback on what Mr. Kelly said about the WJCC Foundation Event at War Hill, I wanted to thank War Hill for hosting that event. It was really nice to showcase the high school, for people to come in who don't normally come into a high school, to be able to see the high school, and also get to meet some of the teachers and their, the grant recipients, and also to put a plug in, to go to the Christmas Parade, the Williamsburg Christmas Parade, which I believe is on the 8th, is that right? Sunday? Is it on a Sunday?
Sunday, December.
Okay, so that's the 8th, where all the mascots will be on parade again. Is it a Saturday? If it's a Saturday, then it's, I'm so sorry, then it.
Saturday.
The 7th, so it's December 7th. And I'm really sorry if I've got the date wrong. But anyway, it'll be the mascots on parade again, which will be fun.
Thank you, Ms. Hummel. I just wanted to echo what my colleagues have said about staff. Thank you for all the hard work in helping us make decisions with regard to budget and CIP. And there's a lot of work that goes on to help us make good decisions. A lot of time has lapsed since our last meeting in October 12th, because of the election. But many of us were able to attend both the Health and Community Foundation Awards event. So I just want to point out again what incredible support we have of our community nonprofits. They support the division immensely, and we're able to do incredible things like the School Health Initiative. And so went out to Toano a couple weeks ago, again, to work with the PTA Council President to pass out turnips, and was, it warmed my heart to see all those middle school students, sixth graders, enjoy the turnips. There was a long line. There was a long line to try turnips and potatoes. They were roasted with potatoes, carrots, and onions, and very long line. And so we couldn't do that without the Health Foundation. And so thank you to our community partners for that. They were very tasty. They were tasty.
Could it be, is there better?
Maybe that'll be on the menu next time.
Okay.
And so this week, was able to attend James Blair's first one-act play under their new theater teacher, Mr. Stowers, who is an alum of both Blair and Jamestown High School. And so those middle school students did a really great job of putting on the 10 Best Worst Things About Middle School. Super cute and very funny. And so just wanted to shout-out to our homegrown teacher there. And then wanted to update the board. I, along with Felicia Highland, will be representing the school division as we participate in Movement Day 2019, which is being hosted by 11-plus local churches. This global initiative began in 2010 in New York City for the purpose of bringing together the larger church and the community in partnership with nonprofits and community leaders to make a difference in local communities. So the focus of Movement Day Williamsburg will be race reconciliation. And poverty, housing, and achievement gap in schools. And so the first meeting is this Saturday at Community Chapel, where the church, kind of broader church and community leaders, will identify a project related to the issues aforementioned, where local resources, including the church, can be brought together to make a difference. So this could be an opportunity for the church to engage in the school division's efforts to mitigate the achievement gap. And so I'll keep everyone posted. Felicia and I will be providing just high-level data about our school and statistics as, just to kind of paint a picture of possible areas where the community and the church could engage to make a difference, to help our students achieve academically. And Ms. Hummel has given me the December 7th as the date for the parade, which is always super fun, and the mascots are there. And so I would encourage the community to come out and see all of our mascots. So moving on to upcoming events. So on November 13th, that's tomorrow.
Tomorrow.
At 8:00. See ya.
Stay here.
See ya. The school liaison is meeting here, liaison committee is meeting here in room 300. The Student Advisory Committee is also meeting tomorrow at 3:00. I'll be there. And the 21st Century and Career Ready Advisory Committee is also meeting on the 13th. Everything's happening.
3:30.
Everything is happening tomorrow. Policy Committee is meeting on the 14th at 8:00 in room 309. I didn't say career and ready, it was meeting in the annex at room 309 at 3:30. And then the SEAC is, Special Education Advisory Committee is meeting on the 14th, James City County Recreation Center at 6:30, and Ms. Cook will be there. At. Ms. Ombi, I know we're having a meeting between now and then, but I do think we should just mention that VSBA is next weekend, or next week, rather. Oh, thank you. It's that Wednesday through Friday. Yeah. So all of us will be there, in form or fact.
Any way we can cut that?
Close, the next closed session is next week, the 19th, at Stryker at 6:00. The public hearing will follow that at 6:30 on the CIP. Regular meeting will follow, immediately follow that. We'll have a joint meeting with our funding partners on December 3rd at 9:00 in Legacy Hall. We'll have a closed session on December 10th at 6:00 p.m. here in 309, followed by work session at 6:30. Then agenda items for the next meeting that will be added, the cell tower lease amendment for, what school is that? Lafayette. Was it Lafayette?
Yeah.
Lafayette, so that will be added, along with the consent to Genov.
Cell tower, there's a lease. There's a cell tower.
It's a renewal of a lease, and also the.
Lease.
Lease. Sorry.
Short update on calendar.
That's right. Thank you, Dr. Heron. So unless there are additional comments, this meeting is adjourned.